If you'll please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you in inviting me and welcome to our school board director's meeting. Before we begin on the agenda and the rest of it, we do have some guests in our audience and scouts and we always like to take time to let you introduce yourselves to us and let us know what school you go to and what ads you're working on. So I don't know who wants to start.
Hello, I'm Wu Yiyuan Wu and currently going to Shaheila Bill School and I'm here to work on the communications manager bench.
I'm Brad Getcher. I'm homeschool and I'm working on communications management.
I'm Joshua Helm. I go to Union and I'm working on citizenship and community.
Great. All right, anyone else? Well, thank you for joining us. If you have any questions afterwards, feel free to come up and approach us and ask us questions at the end, okay? All right, so our next order of business is to adopt our agenda. If we can entertain a motion to adopt the agenda?
Move to adopt the agenda.
Second. Yes, move in second in all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. All right, this meeting, we have a couple of special recognitions. The first one is Bullying Prevention Month and we have a proclamation that Director Perkins is going to read. It's also Director Perkins' birthday today.
You gave it away.
I did.
The proclamation isn't about that, it's about this other thing. The Washington Proclamation. Whereas bullying is physical, verbal, sexual, or emotional harm or intimidation intentionally directed at a person or group of people, and whereas bullying occurs in neighborhoods, playgrounds, schools, and through technology such as the internet and cell phones, and whereas various researchers have concluded that bullying is the most common form of violence affecting millions of American children and adolescents annually, and whereas thousands of Washington children and adolescents are affected by bullying every year, and whereas targets of bullying are more likely to acquire physical, emotional, and learning problems, and students who are repeatedly bullied often fear such activities as riding the bus, going to school, and attending community activities, and whereas children who bully others are at greater risk of engaging in more serious violent behaviors, and whereas children who witness bullying often feel less secure, more fearful, and intimidated. Now therefore, I J. Inslee, Governor of the State of Washington, do hereby proclaim October 2019 as Bullying Prevention Month in Washington, and I encourage schools, students, parents, recreation programs, religious institutions, and community organizations in our state to engage in a variety of awareness and prevention activities designed to make our communities safer for all children and adolescents. Sign this 19th day of September 2019, Governor J. Inslee.
Thank you, Rob. Do we have any comments, anything that we want to make? I know this is an important topic, obviously, to the school board and everyone that works in our system. It's something that we hear an awful lot about, not only within our schools but within our community, as Rob mentioned in the proclamation, social media and the internet, all new ways and every day it feels like there's more and more, you know, websites and social networking sites that our kids are prone to that they could be bullied on and that it's something that we're watching constantly and trying to stay on top of. And I know that we have a lot of dedicated staff members that are always putting this at the forefront, trying to make sure our kids stay safe because that safety is really important to the board.
Yeah, and it's been our work over the summer and the last couple of months to try and articulate, I think we succeeded in articulating, the attitude that the board has about student safety and staff safety. I've been really happy with the work we've done on that. It's in a second reading today, so we're going to talk about it later, I don't want to belabor the point. But I guess the one thought that I had is that occurs to me, you know, you hear stories about this or that students struggling in these contexts, sometimes you hear, oh yeah, middle school is hard. And that's true, middle school is extremely hard, but I don't think that should ever be a conversation item. And it hasn't been, as we've worked on the safety policy and in our discussions since graduation time, and I really appreciate that.
All right. The next, it's Principal Appreciation Month, and for this we have a proclamation that Director Ronald is going to read.
The State of Washington Proclamation. Whereas principals create hope for each and every student in their buildings by leading culture, systems, and learning, and whereas principals work tirelessly each day as visionaries, assessment experts, community builders, public relations experts, budget analysts, facility managers, special program administrators, and guardians of various legal, contractual, and policy mandates and initiatives, and whereas principals work collaboratively with both teachers and district officials to develop and maintain high curriculum standards, develop mission statements, and set performance goals and objectives for schools to achieve educational excellence, and whereas the Association of Washington School Principals, A W S P, honors such exemplary principals who have succeeded in providing high-quality learning opportunities for students as well as their exemplary contributions to the profession, and whereas Principal's Month gives an opportunity to honor and recognize the contribution of all school principals and assistant principals to the success of each and every student in the Washington schools, our most valuable resource. Now therefore, I J. Inslee, Governor of the State of Washington, do hereby proclaim October 2019 as Principal's Month in Washington, and I encourage all people in our state to join me in this special observance. Sign this 19th day of September 2019 by Governor J. Inslee.
Thank you, Jenny.
I would also like to just add that guardians of various legal, I actually thought it was going to say guardians of our most important assets in our school district. I almost added that in there, but I didn't want to go off the actual proclamation.
But that is also very true, yes.
That's right.
Yes.
That's right.
When I look at this, that very first about leading culture, when we think about Evergreen and how we want people to identify with our school district in Evergreen, we have some very talented principals that are leading our schools and really, I mean, they're along with our staff inside the schools are the face of Evergreen and they do a fantastic job leading our culture and making us Evergreen.
Yes. I have seen a lot of principals being very innovative, getting down on students' level. It's very inspiring. I know we have one principal who does one of many examples that actually does reading on Facebook Live every once a week to students or anybody else who wants to listen to a story being read, and that's to reach kids that aren't getting read on a consistent basis. So I mean, it's just very innovative, the way that they're using technology as well to get to other students, everything.
I send an email out thanking our principals either last week or, I mean, it was last week, and the, one of the things I mentioned in it, so I've been around schools for over 30 years and kind of working with systems, and obviously, everybody that works in our system is important, but my view in having experienced what I do as long as I have is that the principal is an extremely key position in the success of what's happening in their building. I'm not diminishing what others do, but exactly what you say, the culture that has to be brought forward, but you're on the front line in the school, working with the kids on the daily, with the staff on a daily basis, but you also are this conduit back to this behemoth district office that's trying to help set the direction of what we're doing. So you've kind of got this difficult role where you're working both worlds, and we have great principals in the district and we're extremely lucky to have them. And then as we've seen, you know, whether it's your proclamation around bullying or whether it's the accidents that we, you know, some of the things that we've seen, they're human beings and dealing with these families and kids on a daily basis and working with things they probably never thought they would have to work with. And again, I'm not just saying the principals are the only ones doing that, but as the leaders of a building, when you have a tragedy, when you have good things happen too, it's an extremely important role. We're lucky to have a great group of principals in this district.
I agree. It's truly the definition of herding cats because there's so much going on at any given point in time and they, they're running all day long, that's for sure. Yeah. We're lucky to have the staff that we have and principals there and leadership roles important.
All right, so next is our Board Consent Agenda. We'll entertain a motion for the Board Consent Agenda.
I move that we approve the Board Consent Agenda.
Second? Yes, move in second in all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll go ahead and move on to the Superintendent Consent Agenda.
I move that we approve the superintendent's consent agenda.
Second?
Move in second in all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next is Superintendent Report. So Superintendent, will you go?
Yeah, we've got a few things, only eight to 10 things. First thing I would mention is that the day after our last board meeting, we had a tremendous visit from Senator Murray to Hila High School. Rob, Jenny, Julie, and myself were able to observe the students basically just run the show, and I know that you others have seen this before, but she walked through the door by herself with a pair of tennis shoes and a winter's coat and jeans with no security or anything, and the kids greeted her at the door and they basically spent the next hour taking her through the nursing program, the pharmacology program, and then a variety of other programs in another one of the classrooms. The students were given about 10 or 15 minutes to be able to work with her and ask questions. It was very impressive. I mean, she was great and the kids were better than she was, and the staff was able to just kind of sit back and jump in at the right time if there were questions. That was a great experience. I was really happy to be able to participate in that. Last Thursday, the Identity Card County held the Learn Here Celebration where they honor a volunteer in the district and a staff member that works in the district down at Warehouse 23. We honored for Evergreen Toby Lucic, who has been very important in the Evergreen Citizens for Schools, certainly with the bond and then also the levy that passed in 2019. That was great. I did note that Aaron, his wife, who works in the district chose not to attend the event, but it was only because she was on her way up to some professional development in Bellevue that she was working on over the weekend. It did stop me from giving her grief about that anyway. And then the second one was Holly Long, our manager of nursing, and it was for the work that she did leading the staff and all the staff in the district around the measles outbreaks. I think they talked about the fact we had seven elementary schools that were affected or seven schools that were affected somehow. So that was great and I loved meeting her mother. That was a really nice thing. So that was a great event. The third thing I would mention is that there was an article in the paper within the last few days about a middle school after-school program that the district supported kids to, we have 30 students per middle school, Y-E, Shaheila, and Caskey on early release Wednesdays once a month. Those three schools go to Firstenberg, Covington Pacific, and Frontier go to Camp at YMCA. They attend for free from 12 to 5:00. We provide the transportation. They have the ability to place in the gym, swim, do whatever they want, and we got a really nice article from the Columbia on that. That's fantastic. I think the foundation funded that last year. Their funding for the grant wasn't available this year, so we, as a district, determined that we could come up with the money to continue that program. That was really nice. And then the last thing I'll mention, and I'm going to have Bill come up and talk a little bit about, is that we, this, I guess today, the graduation rates for the district became official or they were released for 18, 19, four-year graduation rate. We continue to improve and what I just want to say about that from my perspective, and I'll let Bill talk about each of the buildings and kind of what's going on. I've been around, again, I've been around a while, so I, John Dieter, superintendent for a number of years in the district, he set this goal of 100% graduation. The BHAG for the district really was instrumental and the board as well, not to diminish anything that's been done from anyone, but the board and John led that and it's always been what we've been working to achieve. I think when we started that, the rate probably was maybe in the low 80s or upper 70s even. But the district committed some funds to things like graduation coaches, transition coaches, even some additional staffing for before and after school, but I think it was just the awareness of it. And to me, the, you know, John always pushed that real hard and then we kind of, when John retired, there was a little bit of a shift to a lot of, the talk was about the technology initiative, and I don't remember hearing as much talk from the district about the graduation rate. Not saying that it wasn't happening at the building, and clearly was happening at the building, but I think about the fact that kind of this broad message kind of changed and also then, everybody's familiar with kind of the, a little bit of chaos that we went through, whether it was the strike in the fall or the transition in the winter of last year, but through all of that, we talk about the principals and the teachers in the district that never lost focus on that. So even when these things are happening kind of in the background, what's happening in the building is a continued focus on our kids, and I'd like to have Bill kind of come up and share what the rates were for 18, 19, and talk a little bit about that.
Can I add something to that?
Yeah.
When all that was really kind of being developed, kind of part of the culture shift was, it used to be that the conversation about graduation rates was happening at the high school level, and the big shift about that 100% graduation rate was that it all became everybody's ownership and it started in kindergarten on up. And thinking about it is that every grade level set the foundation for those graduation rates and thinking about it as everybody's responsibility. And I think that, and by changing that culture, that had kind of embedded it, you know, and started creating a culture of all of us having responsibility for that graduation rate, and I think that was a part of it too.
I agree. I agree.
Thank you. I think that's a huge part of it, Victoria. We talked today with Craig, with the Community Administration Department, was kind of asking about what we thought was the reason for our success and similar to what we've been talking about. Just mentioning the support of the whole system, the teachers, the counselors, our classified staff, and our administrators, as well as the board and this BHAG. And so you can see the results behind me, I know they're already up, but just a couple of things to draw attention to. As a district, if we go back to 2015, our on-time graduation, our four-year cohort rate was 83.7%. Last year, I'd go back two years ago to 2017, 2018, 87.5. We were super impressed with some of the gains specifically around legacy. If you looked at four to five years ago, legacy was at 7.7%, and we were really struggling to figure out who we were going to serve there, what the program was going to look like, were we going to continue to have an alternative high school? I mean, there were lots of different conversations going on at the time. If we look at the on-time graduation rate for legacy last year, almost 70%, so 69.3%. And I know that's one of the highlights of the graduation season for all of you. Used to be held in an auditorium. Their graduation at Union High School, we've moved it to the gymnasium. Evergreen High School last year and it will be there again this year, and just a phenomenal event, and I know we're all looking forward to that in June.
They might not done until they're back, or they're at Mackenzie Wood, the rest of the students, or the rest of the high schools graduating.
We can certainly do that as well.
And that number not only represents an increase in the graduation rate, but the number of students that are graduating has shot up astronomically, so that in itself is huge. Yeah, so.
Correct. And just across the board, if we look at Evergreen High School, 2015 at about 84%, they're up to almost 87% right now. If you look at Henrietta Lacks, they were slacking in 2016 at 97%, and they're up to about 98.5%, which is phenomenal, so.
And we went out there today, I think she said that was one student, one or two students or something like that.
So the conversations changed at some of our schools, not so much just about graduation, but about the next steps, and I know we're going to get into that with some of the policies and procedures, but about applying for FAFSA, about college, about work, about just the next step in life, and also focus on GPA. And so we're graduating students, what's the GPA and where are we at and how can we help students improve that? I'll just finish the list here. Heritage High School in 2015 was at 80%, at 87.9% last year, so almost 88%. I mentioned legacy. Mountain View actually has our highest on-time graduation rate, great for our four comprehensive high schools, going from 89% in 2015 to 96.3% last year, so great work by Matt and his team, Matt Johnson there at Mountain View. And then finally, Union High School from 93.9% to 95.9%, so still just really incredible in terms of on-time graduation and the number of students we're getting across the line. So as a district, for the first time ever, we've surpassed the 90% at 91.3%. So maybe we could give the schools a round of applause.
So it's interesting because we've had, I mean, these are fantastic numbers, but obviously our goal's still 100% when we talk about like that one or two students at Hila High that we still have, you know, we want that one or two students to find a way to, and so it's still work that we want to do because even though we're, you know, we're hitting 91% now as a district, we still want to make sure that we're reaching every last student that we can.
I think when we were at Hila, Bill and Jewel and I were talking about, so it's a constant effort to try to come up with new tools, and so we talked a lot about this freshman success program that they have taken back from some visits to Chicago and teachers meeting and talking about every one of the freshmen and trying to identify and just know them. So I mean, at some point, we'll, as a board, maybe go out and sit in or go visit one of those sessions when the teachers are getting together and having those conversations. So you can see the continued efforts on hitting that BHAG.
We're getting there, we're going to get there.
Yeah, it's very impressive.
Lots to celebrate though.
Lots, yes, yeah.
For the, people in the audience who don't know what a BHAG is, it's a big hairy audacious goal, just so you know. It's, the thing that's interesting about this, I think that's the one thing about when you've been on the board for a while, you kind of see all the ups and downs and around and about. It used to be that, well, one, there were a lot more kids that weren't making it, but what I love now is the kids that are struggling, people know who they are. I mean, these are not the kids falling through the cracks and nobody knows who they are and what's going on. I mean, this is, we now have a commitment to knowing what's happening with these students, and I think that's huge because we do care and we want to make sure we're doing everything we possibly can, and, you know, some of these struggles are really challenging and some very heart-wrenching because we have students that face some really challenging situations, but we want to help them in every way we possibly can. So I really give a lot of credit to the teachers and the administrators that are there, knowing who these kids are and wanting to help them every, you know, every way they can, so it's pretty impressive.
You took the words right out of my mouth, but I like to say that too. I was shown the list from last year's Union High School, they took the names off, but the circumstances of each of the kids, it's part of the legislative work that I was doing, and it fit on, it fit on one sheet of landscape paper, all these names, and it was a handful that were transitioning, they weren't graduating because five or six of them were transitioning to Crestwood, another five that were enrolled but never showed up, that kind of count leaves the workload for, do we still call them super seniors, Phil? For fifth or sixth year, people working towards graduation, so much smaller. And that alone enables us to expand opportunities or really pay attention to, as you say, the individual who wasn't able to reach graduation on time in his class. Do you know the raw number behind the district's 2019 graduation percentage? How many students does the 90, I can't see, it's right behind you, the 91.3%?
No, but we can get you all of that.
Yeah, I'm interested in that. I imagine the class sizes are the same for the other comprehensive high schools, is that now it's down to a sheet of paper with names and circumstances on them, that counselors can basically just split up four or five each unless it's already a known thing, and that's really cool. Thinking about, well, when it's 80%, there's about 300 students who didn't graduate every year on time, and I remember us talking about that five years ago, it's kind of Dieter talking about, that's 300 and if you add that up every year, you get a population. And now it's, whatever the number is, but.
Getting smaller.
Half that, yeah. 150, and getting smaller every year.
And how exciting about legacy? I mean, when we talked about how several years ago, we were talking about what to do with the program or, you know, and how it was going to continue, and now not only is the graduation rate expanding, but we're building a new school and the program's just really going to keep taking off and more and more kids are going to have opportunities to be successful there.
It's a very vibrant program there now. It's really exciting and I just am so, because I'll tell you, there was a time when I'm like, shut that thing down. I mean, we, it was, I felt like malpractice, teacher, or you know, education malpractice, and now I just think that we've given so much hope and opportunity there. It's just, it's incredible.
And then they'll break ground in the spring on a new facility open in '21.
I know, I'm just so happy about that. That school, they deserve to have that school, it's, it's just incredible. I actually am very excited to get these numbers to former Director Skelton because she's had a real soft spot for legacy when she was on the board, and she will be very thrilled to see those numbers.
So was Mr. Dieter, I saw him Saturday.
Oh, I bet, he was very excited.
He was extremely excited about that.
Yeah, I'm sure he was. That's good. That's really good. Yeah.
So that's all I know, I said I had eight, but I only had four.
Overpromised and underdelivered.
Yes, right. I'm sorry, I could go longer if you want.
You've done your 22 minutes.
All right, so next, we'll, we're going to focus on student results, and we have a results policy for first reading results, R2 Academic Achievement. So I'm going to turn this over to Superintendent, will you go?
Yeah, so R2, we had in workshop last meeting, and so this is our first reading, and I'm going to let Bill kind of go through some of the edits that were presented at the workshop last, I guess, two weeks ago.
Yeah, thank you. So as we get into R2, specifically under results for academic achievement, on R2-1, students will achieve academically and personally challenging rate. Some of the main changes that we had proposed in the workshop were around just maintaining the individual student math growth and reading growth set forth in IREDAI, grades 1 through 8, that we would, we can look at that as kind of some leading data indicators. Additionally, what we would look at rather than section 2.1 CEO on down to the bottom of the page, we propose that we would look at just the district OSP report card, OSPI report card, specifically the areas that are listed, kindergarten readiness, student growth, ninth grade on track, assessment for English learner assessment, dual credit, percentage of students meeting math standards, percentage of students meeting ELA standards, on-time graduation rates, what we just talked about, something called high math growth, high ELA growth, and a percentage of students regularly attending. And so choosing the demographics of the rest, the metrics that the rest of the state goes by. by, thereby we'll be able to kind of compare where each individual schools, where our district is in comparison to the rest of the state, instead of some of the other metrics that we had talked about putting in, that we would have to figure out with some different formulas and that. Moving on to 2.2, demonstrate literacy and learning in all academic career-focused and elective subjects. What we talked about at workshop was saying all elementary students demonstrate proficiency in core academic areas of reading, math, and science at their grade level. Prior to that, we were looking at students that were just in the Evergreen district, who had entered Evergreen in kindergarten ready at three years old or greater, and so kind of the one standard for all elementary students is what we landed on. Secondary students, kind of the same principle, we want to look at all secondary students who demonstrate proficiency in core academic areas for reading, math, and science at their grade level. We are also talking about the same metrics from our school report card, as well as the new graduation pathways within state requirements with our new graduation bill. So getting our, getting a report of looking at the high school and beyond plan and what the graduation pathways that the students have chosen based upon the new laws. Come down to the next page, actually the last page, on Evergreen graduates able to engage in post-secondary learning and/or career experiences within the first year following their graduation. What we proposed at workshop is looking at some of that data we received from the National Clearinghouse on the percentage of graduates accepted and persisting in post-secondary education. A second measure would be the engagement of students in post-secondary learning tied to interest areas as measured by their CTE completer comparison data. That's something that Susan Dixon and her department track every year, our recent graduates that have completed two CTE courses on what they're doing a year after high school. So it's good information. The percentage of graduates having participated in internships, apprenticeships, or job shadows, that's also information that Susan Dixon and her team come to present as well. And then the last one that we had was new, the student college-level placement results at Clark College. And so that would show our graduates by high school, percentage needing to take remedial math or reading classes at Clark College, so below one hundred. And the, and the data that I've seen shows a pretty good increase in, excuse me, decrease in terms of students needing to take those remedial college-level courses. So that is the first reading.
Thank you. So at this time, I recommend the board accepts the reasonable interpretation and indicators for results R2 academic achievement as presented for first reading and move it forward for a second reading and approval.
Thank you. At this time, we will call for questions or comments from the audience on this R2 academic achievement. All right, and seeing none, then we'll call for a motion from the board.
I move the board accepts the reasonable interpretation and indicators for results R2 academic achievement as presented for first reading and move it forward for second reading and approval.
Second.
All right, so moving second in, we'll go ahead and open it up to the board for questions or comments.
Appreciate you doing this work. I got to thinking about graduation pathways and compliance with the high school and beyond plan, and maybe, I know I'm hitting the code with this, so please forgive me, and I don't know is a great answer if that's true, too. The high school and beyond plan, has OSPI selected software for that as given in the statute? Do you know?
I don't know if it's listed specifically what we are supposed to use, but we go with Zillow, which is what most of the districts around here use.
Then it's got all of the features that you need to lay out a high school and beyond plan in accordance with the Fifty-Ninety-Nine Law?
Correct.
Do we have a way through Zillow to disaggregate which pathway a student has chosen at graduation?
Yeah, we should, we should be able, once we, well, first of all, they need to finalize the language so that we know specifically what the pathways are and how they're defining some of the pathways. Once they do that, and students have to claim a pathway and select one, then we should be able to run that data.
It sounds like this is not the year to require that in indication and indicators, but it's on my mind to see how many students choose college or technical school or, you know, whatever we can learn, year over years, we watch this new model unfold.
No, I think that's a good point, Rob, because we still have the expedited waivers appealed for this year's graduating class, and so we probably wouldn't get real a hundred percent of the data to be accurate in terms of pathways, because some of the students will select the, either an expedited appeal through OSPI, or there's, there's some alternative assessment that they can still do through special education for another two years.
Right, the individual achievement certificate, yeah, okay, thank you. Yeah, I think that's it, that was my question.
I just want to say again, thank you. I know that when we're making changes to this, that, and some of the things that we measure, that it's, you know, our focus here is for student results, and those policies are on student results and academic achievement, and that we are not afraid to measure how every student is, that every, you know, all of them bring different, unique circumstances, and we're going to measure them and take them where they're at and keep moving them forward through the system and not worry about what they've had prior to coming to Evergreen, it's just all of our kids, because they all matter to us. And so I appreciate you putting that language in there.
You bet, it's what our teachers do every day.
All right. So we'll not take a vote to accept the reasonable interpretation and indicators for results R2 academic achievement as presented and move it forward for a second reading and approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we'll bring that back in November. Next one is R3, results R3 student safety. This is a second reading for adoption. I'm going to, pass the mic to Bill.
So this was a new results policy. Rob mentioned earlier about some of the conversations that came from the, the Heritage High School graduation situation, you know, the student that had some comments. And so what Rob and, well, the board decided together, and Rob went into, made the effort of kind of rewrite, taking some of the language that we had, the, the whole point being that safety is a very significant thing for the school board and for the district's safety of our students, but we didn't, we had safety mentioned in a number of different areas within the results policies or within the OEs, but there wasn't an explicit result policy around safety. So Rob took a shot at writing that, the board looked at that in workshop, we had our first reading last week, or two weeks ago, and this is a second reading. What we, what we would be doing here is adding results policy R3, which specifically talks about student safety, says students will learn, experience, and cultivate cultures of physical, social, and emotional safety. Students will, 3.1, cultivate behaviors and responses that create safe social environments for all others. 3.2, experience learning environments that create a personal perception of physical, emotional, and social safety. 3.3, be respectful and compassionate. 3.4, demonstrate self and social awareness. So it's kind of making specific statements around safety. And then underneath that are, we used to have what was old R3 around social and emotional development, and then was R4 around citizenship, and those are just renumbered in this. So there aren't any changes to what we had talked about. And so I, let me, something here.
Oh, you're making the insertion in our, in the citizenship policy.
Okay.
Based on some community feedback we got in the first year.
Yeah, I think we made that change.
Yes, that's right. Understand how to advocate appropriately and responsibly for change, that is, that is a little bit of a change in R5. So it's, it's R3 as a new results policy, R, the new R4 renamed, and the new R5 renamed with a, I had to guess in, in the new R5, there's elimination of one line that's moved up into the safety, R3, and then the addition of understand how to advocate, it said understand how to advocate for change, now it says understand how to advocate appropriately and responsibly for change. So with that being said, at this time, I recommend the board accepts the proposal for R3 student safety and revisions as presented for approval.
Thank you, Mike. I will call on the audience for questions or comments. All right, seeing none, we'll call for a motion from the board.
I move the board accepts the proposal for R3 student safety and revisions as presented for approval.
Second.
We'll go ahead and open it up to the board, ask questions.
Again, we also have a restricting self and social awareness from the social emotional development, and moving that up.
Yes.
I should have written it down. I, I was thinking about this all day and just had a lot to say about how much, over the years, talking with teachers and parents and students, how much they value the idea of safety. And speaking with stakeholders just over the last couple of weeks, it's one of the foremost questions that I get talking to people is, you know, how do you keep the kids safe? And I end up explaining why active shooter drills are not necessarily the things that help kids feel safe, but there are other ways to approach it, and there was a lockdown in Evergreen this last week, and that ended up in social media a little bit, we had a chance to discuss that. So, you know, it's always been clear, the community almost self-evidently desires peaceful safety, safe schools, peaceful, safe schools. And we didn't, as Mike said, have anything at the board level that explicitly called out, you know, what the result, what the desired result ought to be. This is an expression of what we have right now, and it will come with the interpretation and indicators that will tell the community how the superintendent and his leaders are going to show efforts towards safety. And then we're going to have reports that we can use to summarize that, probably around this issue for the first time at a district level. It wasn't first mandated by, was anything ever mandated by OSPI? No, I just can't recall it. So, you know, that's kind of the motivation behind it, and the idea is that if we're going to do all of this together, then let's have a board policy that expresses what we're going to do together. I really appreciated the opportunity to do some writing about that and advocating, and showing this to a couple of people, and they went, that's all? And it's like, yeah, it's very short-worded and everything, but it names the result we want, and the rest of the work will have to come later. This is a tip of iceberg. And I'm looking forward to seeing that work done.
Well, thank you, Rob, for taking the time to help write the policy for us. I think if we look at these two that we just discussed, the, you know, academic achievement, student results, and the student safety, when, beginning of the school year, Mike went around and talked to staff, and the two components were, we're here to educate our students and keep them safe. And that was really the overarching message, and that's what the board wants for our students. And so I appreciate you taking the time to revise that for us and work on that throughout the last couple of months. All right, any other questions or comments? And we'll go ahead and take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you. All right, next is monitoring district operations. This one is on OE4 personnel administration. This is a second reading and approval.
Yeah, so this is another one, this is around personnel administration. We talked about it in workshop, we had some, a presentation at the first reading two weeks ago, and had quite a bit of conversation in, at the meeting at, at the board meeting two weeks ago. So basically, with this last week, Rob came in and there was a little bit of wordsmithing, but the general, the general gist of what's in this document is the same as what had been presented originally at the board meeting. I think the question, there was some conversation just about what, what the specific documents might be, and the wording around process things as opposed to evidence items. So at this time, I'm recommending that the board accepts the revisions for OE4 personnel administration as presented for approval, as they are, they're, they're the same as what we talked about two weeks ago.
Okay, thanks, Mike. We'll open it up for questions or comments from the audience. And then we'll call from a motion from the board.
I move. The board accept the proposal revisions for OE4 personnel administration as presented for approval.
So move, do we have a second?
I can.
All right, then we'll go ahead and open it up to the board for questions or comments.
I just have a really quick comment. I absolutely love this spreadsheet. I know it's not part of, like, it's what we're going to get with our results, but looking, it's very clear, it's very specific, it takes one look and you get everything, so thank you very much, Janey. I'm sure, Rob. That's an input with, because I knew you were wanting to know how we were going to get some of this information and...
Yeah, she presented the document to us at the last meeting, and I think the only thing that's really different is the colors. And in a lot of places, when we went and did the edits together, that's all they were. There's no change in substance or in, in the data that's being reported. I mean, it's just edits to make those bullet points very clear, that this is the document and this is where the numbers are going to be. And I appreciate the work that Janey did and that Lori did to just make it that clear and that well-presented. Thank you.
And hopefully it makes their job easier also.
All right, any other questions or comments from the board? All right, then we will take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Support. All right, next is a budget update.
Good news report.
Oh, good news?
Poor Gil.
Sorry, Gil.
Budget update.
I'm sorry, we don't want to skip the good news.
Mike wants to hear my budget update.
I would love to hear that.
So the good news report features predominantly the photo with Senator Murray at Hila, I won't go into that, as Mike talked about, it was a great visit. Over at Heritage High School, leadership students planned and hosted a Hispanic Heritage Day, and students of all backgrounds were able to appreciate Hispanic cultures through food, music, and language. We just finished Hispanic Heritage Month, which actually spans September fifteenth to October fifteenth, so we had a variety of activities throughout our schools. There's a picture, it's a little dark, but if it was a little lighter, you would see a number of eighth graders from Covington having a great trip to the Science and Learning Center at Mount St. Helens. The students were able to attend the field trip through the generosity of the Mount St. Helens Institute, which covered all the entrance fees and provided transportation assistance for the buses. And they were, the students had the opportunity to see the volcano from the north side, so they could see right into the crater. Mountain View High School recently partnered with Washington State University Vancouver to support our college-bound scholarship students. One of the significant pieces to get them to their post-secondary goals is to help them fill out those first college applications. For those of you that have filled out or helped your students fill that out, it's a daunting task, as they can imagine, for students that are first-time attendees, the help was very appreciated from Washington State University. We recently had the opportunity to host hundreds of students from throughout the state at the 2019 Association of Washington Student Leaders Group. They were hosted over a three-day weekend at Heritage High School with all of our student leadership and leaders and advisors from our high schools hosting them. They hosted fifty students, or fifty schools from around the state. They had workshops to learn and grow in their leadership skills, but they also did a large service learning project that included making ten thousand meals that they then packaged up and they left here in the community. So Cher's Backpack Program, the Salvation Army, and then our elementary schools with the Family Resource Center, which benefited from those ten thousand meals. You may have seen the Facebook post with the story that students at Evergreen High School... School were able to work with Maestro Salvador Barontas, the music director and conductor of the Vancouver Symphony Orchestra. He was very impressed with the talent of our student musicians, and of course, they were very impressed with the talent and inspiration that he brought them. And that outreach was made possible by the Vancouver Symphony and a grant from the First Aid Foundation. Back in August, Frontier Middle School's transition coach, Ree Gardner, was recognized as the Safeway hometown hero at Portland's Timber Soccer Game. She has done a tremendous amount of support for students and families at Frontier for organizing their pantry, to making sure that a lot of needs are met. And for those of you that have been at a Portland Timbers game deciding already, can you imagine being gotten on the field and being honored? Then speaking of honors, Nick Landis, longtime SRO up at Evergreen High School, just finished up a five, six-year tenure there as the SRO at Evergreen. He was recently recognized as the State SRO of the Year by the Washington School Safety Organization, and he was recognized at a school assembly, and I believe there's a lovely photo there of Superintendent Marlino and Shane Gardner presenting him with his plaque, and then I know that there was a number of other police officers there honoring his work as well. And finally, thank you to Wells Fargo Bank for collecting 230 books and donating them to Hurcris Elementary School's very own Hurcris Little Library. I'm sure you've seen those around there, the pieces that are available for the public to bring and share and take books, and the little library there is located on the north side of the school grounds. And that is just a bit of your good news for the month.
Thank you, Gil. All right, for more good news, now the budget update.
Yes, it's going to be a quick one. The, we're still working on closing the books for last year, so bill is getting close, there's got a few more journal entries, but I think at this point, what we, what we have been talking about in terms of where we think we're going to end up, we're going to be right about where we thought we were in terms of end fund balance. There was a point in the year last year where we were trending a little lower than where we ended up. I know that there was the board, Victoria, Julie, and the district supported kind of a spending freeze that had a lot to do, we had some things kind of happen that helped us out at the end of the year, so that was a good thing. When we get to probably the meeting in November or the first meeting in December, we kind of, we'll have those final numbers, I'll share those with you. The other thing I would just mention is we've had two months' worth of enrollment this year, it's still real early in the year. We're tracking about where we had expected to be in elementary, we're a little bit below in the middle of high school, so we'll look at those numbers again in November, and we'll just continue to update. When I get, when we get through November's payroll at the end of the month, that's when we start, gets where we're starting to be able to start making some estimates on trends or where we're going to be. But at this point this year, the 19, 20 year is looking like it's going to be what we would have expected budget-wise, and we'll have more information on that, so that's all I have on the budget. It's good news, as you've mentioned.
All right, so now comments by the board.
It was really nice of Senator Murray to come visit.
Yeah. What, didn't she used to be a school board member? Didn't she, she was a teacher or a teacher or something?
Yeah, she was preschool teacher.
Preschool teacher, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I knew there was some connection to education and something.
She shared a story of how she got into politics, and it was she had kids in preschool, and there was a reduction in state funding, and she went down to Olympia to talk to legislators about restoring the funding, and one of the legislators said to her, you're just a mom in tennis shoes, you really can't do anything to affect change. And I think she said, two weeks later, she brought back like several thousand parents that she had mobilized, they got the funding restored, and ultimately, I think she came to state, I don't know if she was state legislator first, but ultimately she was elected as the senator, the mom who wore tennis shoes, and she walked in as a mom who was wearing tennis shoes on, at that visit.
Well, so impressive to me with the students and how in control they had of that whole presentation, it's like from the very first moment we walked into that ER simulator and the students were discharged, there was nothing to say except just to stand back and let them go. And I was really happy with the way that the senator responded to the students and kept them engaged in some of the stories that she told, you know, it's regular people who run for office.
They asked great questions, too, at the end.
Yeah.
It was a lot of fun to watch their interaction when they got to just sit at a round table and ask questions and interact.
There wasn't really anything to say, although I did recommend that one girl go to WSU instead of the University of Washington.
Yeah, nothing to say except to school, Mike, for recommending Pullman University.
But you did get to, you did find the time to ask for the loan forgiveness.
That's true. We, 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 we had an opportunity to share that she was instrumental in the funding for Hila through these quality school construction bonds, where the federal government made bonds available, we pay, we repay the principal, they pay the interest over a 17-year period, and I did say at her level, I thought maybe if there was any chance, something passed by her desk with loan forgiveness, she might go ahead and sign off on that.
Well, and Julie had her blood pressure done.
I did, yes.
She did have a blood pressure check.
Yeah, the students were working hard in the nursing center there, and they were taking each other's blood pressure and...
And then she laid down after that, she had a cup of juice.
So you'd take my blood pressure.
It had to make her feel good, though, to see that that program resulted in such an impressive program.
I think she was...
I mean, that school.
She wasn't aware of it, yeah.
She was, I think, completely just taken back by it all, like, I don't think she really expected to walk into what she walked into and to have the kids as knowledgeable and well-spoken, and I think at one point, there was one question that she had that they weren't able to answer, and they said the teacher's name, and from behind the curtain, the teacher answered. So it was, you know, they were there if they needed them, but...
And that was the other thing, too, that she really was impressed with the staff and, because she kept asking questions about what their pathway was to get to that point where they're teaching these, you know, classes in nursing and pharmacy, and so she was really interested in their stories, too, which I thought was great.
I agree.
I must admit, I was really impressed with all of them, so...
Yeah, it was good.
I loved it at that school.
That's been a broad experience. When we bring somebody from out of area, you had to see any one of our schools, Cascadia especially, Hila especially, but, well, we had principal for a day, and so we brought up five community members in through the schools, and wouldn't otherwise normally have gotten a chance to take a look, and everybody came out with such positive comments. We brought WASTA through the Skill Center last year, and we had the regional meeting, and they had never seen anything like what Cascadia is doing, it's just like a model for the state now. So we got to keep doing that, we got to keep bringing people in to see what our teachers and our principals are doing, showing, it's their models for the state, the whole region of Oregon will operate, but I don't know anything about that.
Well, I know that Julie and I, on Thursday last week, actually had breakfast with the board at Heritage High School.
Mountain View.
We were at Mountain, we were at Mountain View, weren't we? Oh my gosh. Sorry, I've got something else going on Heritage, too, so yes, we were at Mountain View, I think Heritage is coming up, and I think me and you were on that one, too. Anyways, so we got to hear about the leadership group coming in and the amount of students from all over Washington, and so there was some pretty good talk, some detailed talk. I actually kind of probed them a little bit for our, with the tasks we've been put on. So they were very excited to discuss that with us, and I just kind of said, you know, what would that look like for you? Because they actually had, said that they would like to see a larger leadership collaboration with just the schools within our district, because a lot of the schools do different things, and so, you know, they, somebody had suggested that it would be a good idea just to get all of our leadership students together, and I, you know, just kept asking, well, what would that look like? You know, how often, kind of thing, and so I got some, some information for our board representation. So it was another wonderful hour of discussions with some of our inspiring students.
Good group of kids, yeah.
Yes, it was.
They're doing good things up there with the whole school and getting kids engaged, so I was pretty impressed.
And that's very clear, given their graduation rates, too.
Anything else?
I was gone, so I feel like a slacker butt.
You're back.
Out of the country.
All right, future agenda items, is there anything that we, we have a busy couple months coming up, I know that, so...
Yes, we do. I was looking at my calendar of all the, we've got a lot with the...
WASTA.
WASTA coming up, and we've got our tour of the new construction, we've got our dual immersion.
Yeah, we got Pond of the next week.
Yeah, we've got, we've got lots.
And then we're taking a tour of all the projects also, so, well, no more just flybys, we actually will be out on, taking or using our hard hats.
Yeah.
It's been collecting dust in the back of my car.
Actually, well, did I talk about the one, I went on one of the construction sites, did I talk about that two weeks ago?
You did.
Okay. I lost track of that time, too. It's not just you, Jamie.
It was by fast.
Yeah. The walls are going up at E S 22, and that's cool.
I know. All right, well, if there's no other business, then we'll go ahead and call it for recess. At this time, the board will sign documents. We will reconvene in the same room for a board workshop, where we will have operational expectation OE10 learning environment. We will do a OE10 learning environment interpretation and indicators. We'll have a senior community service projects update, a 2020-21 Evergreen Public Schools calendar, that's a draft. We'll give legislative updates, a superintendent update, and then we'll have a board meeting debrief. After that, we will have an executive session where we will review the performance of a public employee. Thank you.